...their time to come down here tonight if you allow us to make decisions that you want us to make, is there any fright? Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Just a few announcements tonight. I'm flying my announcement machine. We have a reception for Mr. David Cameron will be held this week, or next week, Friday, August 3rd from 5:30 to 7:00 at the community center, correct?
No.
No?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. I wonder who put this together?
I did.
That's a community center, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wednesday, not Friday.
Yeah. Perfect.
There it is, miss.
Also, let's see. Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith got married and that's why he was gone, so welcome back, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And last but not least, Ms. Heatherly, you cannot hide. Your last day is this Friday.
Yes, would be correct.
So, congratulations, we will miss you. You've done an excellent job here, and we appreciate it. And good luck in your new endeavor. Baltimore's a big city. Yes, it is. So, uh, let's see. With that said, I'd like to go on to mayor's announcements and votes. Would like to appoint Mr. Brandon Self as Ward 1 council member. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six to zero. Also like to appoint Mr. Todd Wojcicki to the EEZ board. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? A motion carries. Thank you very much. Brenda will swear in Mr. Brandon Self, sir. Come on up to the board, sir.
If you wish, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Fill in the blank with your name. I blank.
I, Brandon Self.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Prescribed for my office by law.
For my office by law.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of law and law.
The provisions of law and law. Of this state.
This state.
Affecting cities of this class.
Cities of this class.
And the ordinances of the City of Republic.
The ordinances of the City of Republic.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
In office, so help me God.
In office, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to the council.
Thank you.
That, like to go to assistive participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, sign in, give us your best three minutes. Seeing none, says the participation closed. On the consent agenda, would like to have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six to zero. One. Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell. Please give us an overview of the financial report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Briefly, this will be touching on sales tax revenues received for the month of June. We had a little bit of a dip as opposed to the, uh, this month last year. We received $215,747.25, which was a 22% decrease from this month last year. And our overall year-to-date decreased by 8.71% year-to-date. The only explanation for this, and also this affected the fire sales tax, which I'll get to in a minute, is the timing by the Department of Revenue as to when they get their monies to the various municipalities. City of Springfield had a, had a story of a similar decrease, and so that was the usual situation. These fluctuations are dependent on when the Department of Revenue gets that money into us. So, we are hoping that we will have a rebound next month. With respect to the fire sales tax, $26,959.11 was collected. That was just under 2% down from the previous, same month last year. Overall, we're still 14.5% ahead of last year year-to-date for that tax. And with respect to motor fuel tax, $33,274.18. Fortunately, that was one that was up from this time last year by 14%. And year-to-date overall, we're 3% ahead of 2015. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. O'Donnell? Thank you, sir. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? I need a motion to approve financial report.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. Uh, anything for Mr. Derrickson?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Cameron?
Thank you. Uh, first, I want to thank, uh, everyone for the welcome that we've had, or have had to the community. I'm looking forward to next week. My wife will actually be able to join. Uh, we're gonna be, kinda place to locate till the houses and the relocation and all that stuff closes, but I want to thank the staff, the mayor, council, everyone that's been very, very nice, uh, getting adjusted and acclimated to the citizens of Republic, the business community, and so it's going very well. So, I appreciate that. I've enjoyed the meetings. I enjoy continuing to work and listen, and, uh, but right now, there's been a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, and just continue to meet with a lot of people, and I thank you for your support. And I'm looking forward to having my wife and my kids, uh, here, so that'll be really nice, so that, uh, I'm not driving back and forth to Arkansas on the weekends. But, uh, I do have a few things to report real quick. We did have an expenditure on an emergency repair for the wastewater department, uh, by ordinance or by code. We wanted to report that at the next meeting. It was $6,886. I did authorize that repair of a ball valve on a pump that was needed, so the pump is not something that I wanted to wait with, so I went ahead and authorized that, that This week, or next week, Ron and I will be meeting with OTC to hopefully finalize or have some discussion on where we're at, where we are with that project, and so hopefully we'll have a report coming soon, but look forward to meeting with them and just getting that project up and moving and having a report for you, uh, real soon. With that, at the next council meeting, we'll have a, a, uh, development agreement with Heart of America. Uh, that's the distributor that was looking to relocate or build a new facility outside of town, Brookline Development, Central Area. So, we'll have an agreement with them. We've worked out, uh, to get that finalized. Hope to have that at the next meeting. We're gonna work, staff's been working on a noise ordinance or revision to our noise code. I mentioned this at the last meeting. Hopefully by August 8th or the 25th, we'll have that for council's review and discussion. Um, and then, again, just thank you for all the support and welcome, and so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All the future community events? Welcome, Mr. Keeling.
Good evening. Future community events for the remainder of July and into August. Now, this coming Thursday, July 28th, we have senior movie day. The movie will be Bridge of Spies. That's at 3:00 PM. It's a free event. Free popcorn, free coffee are provided. July 29th through August the 12th is Todd Academy. That's rated two to five. It's at 9:30 AM or 10:45 AM, and pre-registration is required. August 5th is the last day to register for our Fall Coed Adult Softball League and also for our Fall Men's Adult Softball League. Those seasons start in mid-August, and all the games are played at Bourbon White Baseball Softball Complex. And just a quick reminder, we've got three special events coming in August. Uh, first one is August the 12th. It's our Youth Tiger Try. Uh, second one is August 13th is our Adult Republic Tiger Try. Uh, you can find information on both of those events at RepublicTigerTry.com. And on August the 27th is our Second Annual Youth Got Mud Run. You can find information on that at RepublicMudRun.com.
Before you leave, just want to announce Mr. Keeling is our Assistant City Administrator, interim city administrator through the end of the year. So, just want to make sure everybody's aware that we've probably announced that before, but, uh, he has located himself in the, my old office back there, thank goodness, and he is occupying it for a change. You can see any bugs fall out of the ceiling because of Ron.
We got him out of there.
Yeah. Ron was in there before, I'm blaming it on him, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board Commissions and Committees Schedule, Board of Adjustments, August 4th, capital improvements, July 27th. City Council meeting August 8th and August 22nd, and Planning and Zoning Commission is August 15th. No old business at this time, but we want a new business. Would like to have a motion to have the first read of bill number 16-12.
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Any abstentions?
In the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, establish a procedure for disclosing potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain officials.
Mr. Derrickson?
Yes, sir. Uh, those of you who've been on the council for a few years realize we do this every two years, present the statute. Uh, the statute allows a city to adopt its own conflict of interest code, and if you do that, then you don't have to do the annual report to the state, because you're governed by the ordinance that's being adopted, and this is just a repeat of what we've adopted for the last several, every two years for the last several years.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Derrickson or Ms. Jackson either one?
I have nothing to add. You did well.
Not done with questions yet.
She's trying to move us along.
Very efficient, pretty clearly.
Yeah, she is efficiency. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Derrickson or Ms. Jackson? Seeing none, this is a first read. If you have questions or comments between now and the next meeting, please contact Mr. Derrickson or Ms. Jackson. The next item, like to have a motion, have the first read of bill number 16-13.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending Schedule I, Table 1B, school zones of the traffic code of the Republic Municipal Code.
Thank you, Brenda. Welcome, Mr. Brock. Give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. As the title implies, the subject of this bill is amending our traffic code. Primary objective is to add a school zone on both State Route M and ZZ. Uh, there's a coordinated effort with the school and MoDOT to build a, uh, school zone. Uh, erected flashers like you see out in front of, uh, on Highway 174. The school is paying to buy the flashers, have them installed. MoDOT is putting up, uh, about six additional ancillary signs to provide advance notice and where the school ends. And, uh, the city's part of the puzzle is to, uh, be able to enforce those provisions when everything is constructed. Uh, I do understand that the, the school has, uh, not going to have their part of it done by the start of the school year. They've indicated that the flashers won't ship until about August 15th. Uh, they're not certain when the contractor will have them installed. However, MoDOT is primed, and they think they'll have the rest of the signage up within a day or so, uh, once the flashers are operable. Our schedule, if we follow the two readings, will have our part ready to go by the start of the school year. I would point out, though, uh, the, uh, in the language of the ordinance, that, uh, the, uh, the school zone would not be in effect until those flashers and signs are installed. Also mentioned as part of this, we went and looked at all the other school zones that we have through town, checked start and stop times of each school, and, uh, we've got a little bit of change in some of the descriptions, just to make sure that all of our signage and descriptions of the zones, uh, match up perfectly.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock?
Is there any discussion or consideration about, um, potential stoplight at the M Highway entrance there to the high school?
Uh, the very first thing that MoDOT did, that, uh, this issue really came to the forefront last year. Uh, there was a couple of accidents on ZZ Highway, uh, had some with some pretty severe injuries, and so the discussion between the school and the city and MoDOT really started at that time, and the first thing they did was engineering studies, traffic studies, uh, speed, uh, checking speeds, checking turning movements, and, uh, the result of that essentially was that there wasn't enough, uh, turning movements at either entrance to justify, uh, a stoplight, um, and the, uh, the speed study didn't indicate that they would approve a lowering of the speed limit, the 55 mile an hour speed limit. But the speeds were extremely high. I think, as I recall, 80 percentile was 65, 67. Uh, substantially higher than, than the 55. And so, uh, where we found the common ground was, uh, putting up the flashers. Now, I do want to relate that, uh, and I'm sorry, sir, it was your question about the M Highway entrance or ZZ?
M Highway.
M Highway. I, I do want to relate to City Council that there is a cost share program that's been initiated by MoDOT. Uh, we've been working back through, uh, OTO and with the school, and, and we, uh, we will have an opportunity to work with the school and MoDOT on a cost share to make improvements to that intersection. One of the first things that we will need to do is, is complete another traffic study to, to see if a signal can be justified, um, but this is a good opportunity. Uh, if you're aware, MoDOT canceled the cost share operations when their funding started to, uh, drop off several years ago. This was a, very, developed very quickly, early summer, um, but if you're, if we're interested in the city in partnering to help make improvements, we're gonna have that opportunity later this year.
Additional questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? Seeing none, this is a first read. If you have questions or comments between now and then, contact Mr. Brock. Thank you. On the next item, I'd like to have a motion, have the first read of bill number 16-14.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero.
In the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, adopting a job description for the position of Human Resource Generalist.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Heatherly. Please give us the overview.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this bill will create a full-time position within the Human Resources Department for a Human, Human Resources Generalist position. This, this position would assist with the assistance of compliance of benefits, payroll, personnel policy, retirement, the reporting requirements for Obamacare, the Department of Labor, and, um, changes in Fair Labor Standards Act. We've analyzed the workflow and the amount of work that comes through the department, and with the obligations and duties that we have upon us for reporting, we do feel that this position is needed within the Human Resources Department, and it would be, um, directly supervised by the Human Resources Director, um, along with meeting the directives, um, in special, um, I'm losing my thought process, sorry, um, compliance, um, for processing that we're needing to do. Um, we feel that would be beneficial to the city to have this position keeping up to date. Um, we're proposing that the compensation for this position is a grade three with a minimum salary of $14.16 an hour. Now, funds were allocated in the Human Resources budget for a permanent part-time position, um, so there is a shortfall of approximately $5,000 within my budget. Um, I have discussed this with Finance Director John O'Donnell, and he is assured that it can be covered out of the general fund further made of 2016.
Questions, comments, discussion for Ms. Heatherly?
Looks like a lot of responsibility for $14 an hour.
Yes, sir, it is. Additional questions, comments, discussion? This is a first read. However, in the second read, Ms. Heatherly will not be here to present, so fire all your questions now, otherwise I'll light her up. Mr. Harder, I knew you'd be upset at this length.
So, when, when, if this passes, when you expect to fill a position?
We're gonna post it as an internal posting only. We do have, I do have a, a person working with me now.
Okay.
Um, part-time. So, we will post it as an internal posting only, so that it is available to any city, um, position, but we will post it for five working days. Um, so, the, the idea is to fill it quickly. Jared will be, um, interviewing in my absence and filling that position. By posting it internally only, you know, we do have an applicant that is currently doing those duties. We do have an employee, I mean, that's currently doing those duties, so.
So, with, uh, as you're moving on, who would be the supervisor then over this?
That would be Mr. Keeling.
That would be in the interim.
In the interim, in the interim position, and, and, uh, she will be corresponding with me on questions that she has in interim time.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna leave you all high and dry.
Not, but not till Friday afternoon?
Not until Friday afternoon. Then it's see ya later.
Additional questions, can Mr. Bashir?
Is the $5,200 approximately, um, shortfall for a year or for the remainder of the year?
That's for the remainder of the year. Now, that also took in any benefits or anything that this person qualified for, so that's not just salary. That is taxes, that is benefits, that's all encompassing of what I would be shortfall for the year. And then it would be budgeted in the 2017 budget for this process.
Mr. Wilson?
When you leave, how long before they fill your position?
Well, our hope was that it would be filled, but we just posted it last week, um, for 30 days, and we are hoping that they can have somebody in place. I believe we're optimistic by October 1st.
So, if you've not been here and your salary, that would take up some of that $5,000, would it not?
It would. It would help, it will offset it, yes, it will.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, this is a first read. If you have questions or comments, discuss between now and the end of the week, please contact Ms. Heatherly after, after next, after this week, contact Mr. Keeling. How's that?
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
On other business, resolution number 16-R-56, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, allowing for the reimbursement of certain capital expenditures in connection with future facilities and infrastructure projects. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. Welcome, Mr. O'Donnell. Give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, as the exhibit discusses, we, the city is involved with two major capital projects, uh, construction of a potential new city hall and construction of a new building that will be leased out to Ozark Technical Feeny College. And it is, and it is possible that the city will incur some expenses, uh, prior to, uh, financing being put into place for these projects. What this resolution does, it allows the city to be reimbursed for those projects, uh, under the, and preserve the city's ability under the rev, Internal Revenue Code for that reimbursement. Right now, any expenditures would have a 60-day timeframe to either be reimbursed by a, a financing package, or other, or otherwise, the city would bear the cost of that. So, for example, the recent land purchase for a new city hall, which was done on June 9th, I believe, this allows us, this resolution allows us to still be able to reimburse, even though it will be certainly more than 60 days for that financing package to, to take place. So, this is a safety net for the city to recover any and all expenditures, not just this land purchase, but anything else relating to the two projects, uh, that have been paid utilizing city funds. And so, we request approval of the resolution.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. O'Donnell? Or Mr. Derrickson, since his name's on it as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's on there.
Like they have somebody in the bullpen. I like to have somebody in the bullpen.
Anything at all?
Any evening.
Mr. Harder, go ahead.
You're getting ready, you're getting ready to gavel me out.
And now, this, is this just for these two capital improvements, or is this gonna be something we keep on the books for other items?
Um, I think this can also apply to, to other items as well. Uh, right now, I was focusing on basically these, these two major projects and making sure that we were, uh, we had that safety net in place.
Thank you. Question? Our YOMLR Council said we can tweak this resolution in the future if we need to, uh, come back to council and make adjustments to it.
Okay, very good, thank you. Question? Additional questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. On the next item on the agenda, resolution number 16-R-59, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, awarding the bid for asphalt maintenance at various municipal facilities and parks and authorizing the execution of a contract for said work. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. Welcome, Mr. Keeling. Please give us the overview, sir.
Thank you. Uh, just, I did want to let everyone know, right before the meeting started, I distributed a map of, uh, the, where the scope of work is gonna take place. This is for the, uh, crack filling, seal coating, and re-striping where necessary of eight or nine parking lots throughout our park system and our walking trails within Miller Park and JR Martin Park. Uh, we bid it out, uh, the formal bid process, received three bids back. Uh, the first bid was from all sealed up in the amount of $25,988. Second bid was from ball paving in the amount of $30,690. The final bid was from Springfield striping and sealing in the amount of $35,378.59. Uh, Wayne Hawkins, Parks and Facility Maintenance Superintendent, contacted the references of all sealed up. Uh, like what we heard, Republic School District was one of them. Uh, American Paving, they did a lot of work for American Paving in the past, Heights Development Group out of Springfield, and a company called Undercover in Rogersville. So, we're comfortable with recommending the build, bid to all sealed up. Uh, if approved, uh, we'll start on the trails immediately, uh, and we'll have to work around our schedules with the parking lots surrounding our municipal facilities.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Keeling? Mr. Harder?
Your timeframe will be by the end of summer, if you believe?
Yeah, we actually would like to have it done by about the second week of September. It's all gonna depend on, we got the rack in business, we got the community center, but we'd like to have it done, now, the trails are gonna start right away.
Yeah.
Uh, but we'd like to have it done by about the second week of September.
And we have never, you said we have never used all sealed up?
We have not, no. But the references checked out really good. That's the first thing, I had never heard of them personally, uh, but Wayne really did his diligence, contacted at least four or five references and was spot on every single one.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
On the handicap areas, to, to make sure that they, if they resurface that, that they'll get it smooth and flat?
Smooth and flat, and, and maybe even more importantly, on the markings, we're gonna run all of those through Jerry Kendall, our ADA coordinator, make sure those are spot on. Though, that has been a thing here in the past, if you might remember the Phoenix Center parking lot. Uh, fortunately, that wasn't our area, that was an architect area, but we did get that corrected. But absolutely, we'll make sure we do our due diligence there.
Okay. Question? Additional questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Keeling?
Did want to add, with the recent addition of the new parking lot of the senior center, I say new parking lot, we tore it out and redid it all. With this work at the senior center, everything over there will be new. It'll be really nice, too.
Mr. Poole?
They did an excellent job in the parking lot at the senior center.
Good.
That's our public works department.
And everything.
Yeah, public works department, great job.
Very good, very... And everything. It's very good, very.
That was Mr. Brock's crews, right?
Yes.
Okay, good job.
It's Brother, yeah, Brother, Brother Brockman.
You just got promoted, didn't you?
Anyway, they did, you did a really good job. And it was hot as could be. But, they still did a good job.
That's good, that's good. Thank you, Ms. Cool. Additional questions, comments, discussion? For Mr. Keeling or Brother Brock? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On the next item, Resolution Number 16-R-60, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the construction of a second sidewalk on South Lynn Avenue. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion in second. Welcome, Mr. Brock. Please give us the overview in a second.
Mayor, through this resolution, we're, we're asking for approval to do a relatively small construction project. We're asking for specific approval because this was not contemplated in our annual budget. The issue came up as, early in the year, when, as Green County was working on the road widening, we started to hear individual calls from residents in the area asking if there were going to be sidewalks. Those discussions kind of moved on to a communication through the homeowners association in the area, and working through that group, we looked at some different ways to try to move pedestrians from the third, fourth, and fifth edition, which is the south side of Shuider Creek, across that barrier to be able to access the homeowner's pool in the earlier editions of Valley Park, as well as our park facility is on Miller Road. So, our, our internal analysis really indicated that the best short-term method to do that was setting the sidewalk between Jared and Shuider Creek Lane. When the county finished their construction, we went out and kind of finalized our proposed alignment, our cost estimate, and that led us to tonight's meeting and the request for authorization to move ahead of the project. Total cost of the project, we're estimating at about $21,650, but the majority of that would be essentially charged through other annual light items, our salary cost, that includes equipment cost, and it, really, the unexpected expenditure of about $87,50 would be for the bulk materials that would go into the work. Timing wise, we have a number of other projects that we're working on over the summer, so we would be thinking a late September, maybe early October construction time.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? I'm going to ask this question. Does the box culvert there have enough room to be ADA compliant?
It will be tight. We did check that, Mayor. They, they put in the correct footage that was in our agreement. It could have shifted a little bit farther east to give us a little more room, but we really didn't find anything that we felt would want a formal complaint back through the county. Overall, I thought they did a good job. The project dragged on a lot longer than anyone would have desired, but the finished product looks nice.
Will it be ADA compliant?
Yes, will be ADA compliant, yes, sir.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Try to get, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Brock. That concludes our open session. Business would like to go into executive session under RSMO 610.021.1. Like to have a motion?
Motion.
Motion in second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Phil? Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Beshears?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. We will take a quick five-minute reset. That concludes our open business tonight. Thank you very much for attending.